Gary, if you could unmute and let us know that you hear us and that we can hear you.
See, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
No.
Now we can't.
Now you're muted yourself.
Oh.
There you go.
My calls must be backwards. In any case.
All right. Well, this is good. This works. We can hear you. All right. Very good. Thank you. So Dylan, everyone from the public still on?
Yeah, we have four people in the room and we are recording.
Okay, and they can hear me, right? Even though they might be muted?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get started. I'm going to read most of the intro to the agenda before we call the meeting to order just because this is a virtual meeting. And folks on the line, this is probably their first experience. For the duration of the coronavirus health emergency, village hall is closed to public and meetings are held with participants at remote locations connecting to conferencing software provided by zoom.us. Members of the public are invited to view meetings live using the zoom client, which also allows them to raise a hand and contribute with voice and video when they are invited to do so during public portions of the meeting. So I will be calling on you in the public when it's time for testimony, when you have members of the public who want to either question anyone who's given testimony or make comments. And so at that point, we will ask you to raise your hand or send us a chat message and we will unmute the line and you could then participate in the meeting. Okay, so we're going to call the meeting to order. First, we're going to recite the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the following is required to be read by the open public media act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the village hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including date and time of this meeting. Please note that a curfew of 11:00 PM is strictly adhered to by the zoning board. No new matter involving an applicant will be started after 10:30 PM. At 10:00 PM, we will make a determination and advise applicants as to whether or not they will be heard. If an applicant cannot be heard because of the lateness of the hour, the matter will be carried over to a future meeting to be determined by the board at 10:00 PM. Okay, so the first thing we have to do, folks, is the reorganization. So before we can move forward, we are going to just take a few minutes of your time and reorganize, which we do on an annual basis. Bruce, do you want to go through?
Yes, we're going to do it this way. The first thing we do need to do is have Gary become a member of the board again by being sworn in. So Gary, if I can have your attention, everybody else can go unmute, but Gary, you're unmuted. So here we go. I'm going to administer the oath of office to you now. If you would raise your right hand. I repeat your name.
Hi, Gary Negrits.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of zoning board of adjustment member.
Of the office of zoning board of adjustment member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Gary.
Gary, you just need to make arrangements to get your oath signed and notarized and back to Jane.
I have to notarize too. Okay.
Okay, need to get that, need to get that accomplished before the next meeting.
Yes.
And, you know, if you're out and about and you cannot find a notary in the Borough Hall, village hall is not open. If you call my office, we are all notaries here. And we have a drive-through facility now, so you can drive in your car, come up to the window, they'll do it right there and off you go. Okay, the next thing, Mr. Chairman, is now to take and make a roll call with your new member established.
Jane.
All right, Sergio Allegra.
Here.
Greg Brown.
Here.
Gary Negrits.
Here.
Diana Rule. John Pepietra.
Here.
Isaac Lebo. Matthew Bandow. Daniel Perman.
Here.
Okay, now looking at your agenda, members, the first thing to do would be go down to number six. And that is to nominate and elect a chairman of the board.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Sergio Allegra for chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Someone can move to have the nominations closed?
I'll move to have it closed.
Second?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Now a motion would be in order to cast one vote in, for the chairman, unopposed to be Sergio. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Now a roll call vote, Jane.
Okay. Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Sergio Allegra?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Sergio.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Now nominations would be in order for vice chairman.
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Greg Brown as vice chairman of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
I'm making a motion to close nominations.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Now a motion is in order to cast one vote for unopposed vice chairman to be Greg Brown.
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Jane.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Nominations for an election of chairman pro temp?
Nominate Gary Negrits.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? That a motion is in order to close nominations?
Make a motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Now motions in order to have a one vote cast for chairman pro temp be Gary.
I'll make a motion.
Second? Roll call, Jane.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Matthew Bandow? I'm sorry, Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Okay.
Next will be the appointment of the board secretary.
Nominate Jane Wondergem.
Second?
Again.
Motion? Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
I make a motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion in order to have one vote cast for unopposed Jane Wondergem as secretary to the board.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I can turn this back over to you now for the appointment of board professionals. They can all be done in one motion if they're all unopposed.
Okay, so correct me if I'm doing this incorrectly, Bruce, but I'm going to move to appoint Bruce Whitaker as attorney for the board. I'm going to move to approve, appoint Ben Casio as alternate attorney. Let me just scroll down the list here. Going to move to appoint Mary Ann Buchi Carter and Peter Vandenkoy of CME Associates as the professional planners for the board. Move to appoint Christopher Ruchhauser as professional engineer of the board. And I think that's it.
Second that.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Okay. Okay, Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Chairman, a resolution would be in order to adopt the bylaws as submitted to the board members. You all have them.
Okay, so I move to adopt the bylaws of the Bridget Board of Adjustment as amended and adopted July 10, 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Who seconded?
Yes.
Jonathan.
All right. Okay, Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Next resolution would be in order for number 12, adoption of the matter of compliance requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act.
So I make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the schedule of meetings.
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Next will be a motion for the adoption of the schedule of meetings from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
Do a motion?
I would say, just let's take a look at that first, just give a, take a moment to look at that. I think I had said before this meeting started that I would recommend that we list the meeting place through October to be a virtual meeting. And then if there's any change to that, Jane can obviously renotice. The only other thing is Jane, sometimes we, we put in a fifth Tuesday just so that we have the ability for it, so you don't have to notice again. If I look, September 29th is a fifth Tuesday. Do we want to include that just to give us flexibility?
Probably need it.
I would say yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's been times when we've decided not to do it, but at least it's been published.
Okay.
Okay, October only has four Tuesdays and so does November. And nobody wants to meet on the fifth Tuesday in December on the 29th.
Do they, do they want to meet on the 22nd, though? Should I delete that one? December 22, or should we keep it?
If you delete it for me, I'll say that right now.
I thought we deleted it last year.
We, we always did. This one was, yeah, so, okay.
I say we delete it again unless anyone strongly wants to meet on the 22nd.
No.
Okay.
And then we'll amend the list to show virtual meetings through October 20, through and including October 27.
Okay.
Motion in order?
Do a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Do a second?
Second.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
All right, so I'll reprint that and send it out to you again.
So now if you look at the schedule, Sergio, down to your, your appointments for the site plan committee, and then there's an adjournment of the reorg.
Okay, so I didn't get anyone to, I believe, indicate whether they want to be on the site plan committee. If anybody on right now indicates that they'd like to be on site plan committee, would.
I believe I'm on that list, Sergio, so if I still am, I will gladly remain.
Okay, anyone else interested?
I think I was on it.
Yeah, and Diana was. I don't know.
Yeah.
Dan or Greg interested in being on the site plan committee?
Bruce, do we have to do this one now or can we adjourn?
You should do it now because there's a couple of resolutions I've done that require site plan review. That could always change during the year.
It can, okay.
Yeah.
But it can't be greater than three, correct?
That's correct. It can only be three.
Okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll go on and then we, maybe we change it because I think it would be nice to have Diana on it.
So if there's going to be a change later, we just have to, Jane, put it back on the agenda.
Okay, so if nobody else, then I'll do it and then let, and then put Diana back on it.
Okay, right, because we need three members now. All right, so it'll be Jonathan Pepietra, Gary Negrits, and Greg Brown. And then we just need a motion to, I guess, close the reorg. Is that right, Bruce?
That is correct.
I'll make a motion to close the reorg.
Do a second?
Second.
Okay, Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Daniel Perman?
Yes.
Okay, so we did the roll, we swore Gary in, we did the reorg. You know, we've got minutes to approve. Could we just move these to the end?
Now call the regular meetings to order.
Okay. So we're going to call the regular meeting.
Call the regular meeting to order. All of the statements that you made previously, or the call to the order of the reorganization meeting will carry over to this meeting and have a second roll call. Jane?
Okay. Chairman Allegra?
Here.
Greg Brown?
Here.
Gary Negrits?
Here.
Diana Rule? John Pepietra?
Here.
Isaac Lebo? Matthew Bandow? Daniel Perman?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, so now we just move on down the regular agenda, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
What I would like to do is to take the approval of the minutes, even though it's only a couple of minutes. Let's move that towards the end because I think our applicants have been patiently waiting.
Okay.
And so we will then, let's move on to non-agenda items. Are there any members of the board who have liked to make comments on matters not on the agenda this evening? No, being none. Okay, Dylan, let me know if anybody responds to this. Members of the public, now is the time to make public comments on matters not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone out there?
You can raise your hand if you would like to. I'm showing nobody.
Okay, so before we move on to our first matter, I just want to let anyone know who is on the line for the Joshua and Caitlin Fern matter, which is 133 Kennelworth Road. That matter is being carried to July 28, 7:30 PM via Zoom. No further notice required. So if you're here for that application, you can drop off. Welcome to stay and listen to other applications, but that one will be heard July 28. Okay, so if we, we move on, we begin with old business. This is the matter of Michael and Paula Shadow. It's an application to permit the construction of one and two-story additions, pool and patio, which resulted in a minimum side yard setback of 18.27 feet to the addition and 15.27 feet to the landing and steps, where 23.67 feet is required. And a section of the driveway for turnaround with a width of 32 feet, where 17 feet is permitted at 302 Prospect Street, block 4103, lot 6, in an R1 zone. This is being continued from March 10, 2020. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening all. I would like to thank this board for your input at our previous hearing and for giving us the opportunity to go back to the drawing board and make the necessary revisions. We initially were seeking four variances. The variances were for the side yard with the one-story addition and the landing and steps. The second variance was for the driveway width, where the allowed is 70, maximum allowed 17 feet. And the proposed was 32 feet. That was for the turnaround only. The third variance we were seeking at that time was the building coverage variance, where we had the maximum allowed is 20%. And we were 21.28%. And the fourth variance was the coverage by improvements, where the maximum allowed was 45%. And we were at 50.5%. Mr. Perman noticed that there was an error in the calculations for the lot area within the first 140 feet. So we made the correction on the calculation, which helped us. So thank you, Mr. Perman. And we made the necessary adjustments. So the, the revisions we made was once we had the right calculation for the area, that is, within the first 140 feet, is 85 by 140. That makes it 11,900 square feet. This area changed our calculations for the building coverage and for the coverage by improvements. So the old numbers, the old percentage we have for the building coverage was, that was 20, 21.28%. What we did was we reduced the area of the deck slightly. And then we, with the new number, that is, the 20% of 11,900 is 2,380. By reducing the deck slightly and using the correct calculation, we were able to eliminate the building coverage variance. Then the coverage by improvements, again, that was, that was revised because the old calculation, the 45% of 11,200, that was the wrong number, gave us 5,040 square feet maximum allowed. Now that we have 11,900 square feet, 45% is 5,355 square feet maximum allowed. So that gave us the 315 additional square feet for our, our proposed additions. So we were able to do a combination of the new area. And we took the pool and pushed it to the rear, as a few members of the board suggested. And once we pushed the pool further away from the house and more to the rear, we were able to reduce the, the coverage by improvement. We also reduced the patio area within the first 140 feet. And as suggestion by Mr. Negrits, in proposed driveway, we maintained the line of the existing driveway on the right side for the existing vegetation, and we widened only on the left side. So we only added one foot to the left side, where, on the side of the house. So by doing all this, we were able to eliminate the coverage by improvement variance as well. So two out of four variances were eliminated. So the two variances that we have left are the side yard setback, which, which stayed the same. The, the required side setback is 23.67. And we are proposing 18.27 for the one-story addition of the mudroom and the 15.27 feet for the landing and steps. The, so that side yard variance remain and the driveway width variance. And that is, again, for the turnaround only. That is 32 feet. I would like to mention that the existing turnaround that they have is 36.9 feet. So we're reducing the turnaround to 32 feet. So as a reminder, we still have, we're still dealing with four hardships. One is the substandard, the lot is substandard in width. The second variance is the shape of the property that is long and narrow, which forces us to having a long and narrow driveway, making it unsafe. And that's why we're proposing the turnaround. The third hardship is the house is existing non-conforming to the side yard. And we're proposing the exterior stairs to be aligning with the sidewall of the house, the non-conforming sidewall. However, the proposed mudroom addition is recessed three feet, making the proposed side yard 18.27. The fourth hardship is the garage is way back, located way back, generating a long driveway. The house being, being existing non-conforming to the side yard at only 12.5 makes, forces us to have the driveway narrow. And this property is on a slope. And the property is located on a main road. That's what we think, is our opinion, that the. That's what we think is our opinion that the driveway needs to be safer and the turnaround is necessary. So I'm reiterating from the last hearing, the proposed rear addition, for the proposed rear addition, the mudroom is one-story structure. It's a small volume that cannot be seen from the street. The side stairs are low, open air and light structure, also cannot be seen from the street. The driveway is too narrow and on a slope, and the property is on the main road. So I, I hope our revisions reflect the effort and the care we took to respond to the input from this board. The proposed additions don't represent any detriment to the neighbors or the community. With your approval, the shadows will be able to enjoy the property as its fullest. Thank you for your time and consideration on the approval of these variances.
Now, for the record, just to have it reflect, the plans you are now referring to are plans with a final revision date of 3/11/20?
3/11/20, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Pridies. Board members, any questions? Thompson?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Gary, Dan?
No.
And Greg?
No questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think you addressed pretty much everything that we we had issues with in the previous application. So why don't we open it up to members of the public? If anyone on the line would like to question either the applicant or their architect, please raise your hand virtually, send us a chat. Now, if you'd like to make comments on this application, any comments on this application, same thing, just let us know, and we'll unmute your line. Nothing going?
Nothing.
All right, so Ms. Pridies, I think that was a good summation. So if it's okay with you, we'll close the hearing. Ms. Shadow, your, or Mr. Shadow, whoever's on the line, welcome to make any additional comments if you like. But if not, you could stand on your testimony, and we will close the hearing and deliberate and vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the hearing is now closed. So now we'll entertain any board member deliberation and/or motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve these new plans as they were written by the architect, and that they address virtually all the issues brought up by the board, and recognize again Ms. Pridies' effort, as is usual for her, to try to stay within or as close to recommended guidelines as possible when making new designs. She has done this again. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I second it. I'd second it and just add that the only non-conformities are actually driven by the existing location of the house on the property. So I think that should be noted.
Agreed.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Frank Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepitra?
Yes.
Daniel Proman?
Yes.
All right, congratulations, you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
All right, you too.
Likewise.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have the applicant? And anyone who's going to testify on the Tapia matter?
Yes, we need Roger Schlick and Angela Tapia.
Good evening.
All right, so let me just go through this, Roger, and then we'll get started. This is the matter of George and Angela Tapia, an application to extend the covered porch deck under the existing port cochere roof, constructing new detached two-car garage, new exterior steps, patio and walks, and a new in-ground pool, which will result in coverage by above-grade structures within 140 feet of the front lot line of 22.3%, where 20% is permitted, gross building area of an accessory structure of 6.8%, where 5% is permitted, and coverage by improvements within 140 feet of the front lot line of 41%, where 40% is permitted, and a driveway width which exceeds what is permitted at 66 Heights Road, block 2110, lot 6, in an R1 zone. This matter is being carried from June 1, 2020 without further notice. Good evening.
Good evening. Angela, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. I guess we first have to get sworn in.
Yes, I have video for you.
You do, you don't?
Do you need a video for her?
A video for both. We raised our right hands. Nice to see it.
There, they should be able to turn on their video feeds. There you go.
You both raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please proceed, Roger, with your name and address.
Roger Schlick, registered architect, 56 Wall Street Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey.
Ms. Tapia?
Angela Tapia, 66 Heights Road, Ridgewood, New Jersey.
Roger, you're going to lead?
Yes.
Okay. Schlick has been qualified as an expert witness in the field of architecture many times before the board. So unless there's any questions by members of the public regarding that, he can be so qualified this evening and render a professional opinion in that field. If being done, Roger, you'll be qualified that way, so please proceed.
Thank you. The drawings I'm using this evening are labeled V1 and V2. The last revision was July 2nd, 2020. And then there's two sheets of photographs, and then one historic photo of the subject property. So I'd like to go through the existing conditions first and then discuss the project goals, and then the required variances that we're seeking this evening. The property is 66 Heights Road. Heights, it's in the Heights Historic District. It is not a historic structure, but it is in the Historic District, just being on Heights Road. We believe the house was built around 1885. We believe it had a larger piece of property at one time, based on the location of the existing house. It's, you know, a large home in itself with a wraparound porch that wraps around the left side, across the front, and then there's a port cochere to the right. The goal of the project is to develop a more functional use in regards to site and regarding day-to-day access, garage usability, and then access to the rear yard from the house itself. Presently, if you look at the site plan, the existing garage slash barn is located in the extreme right-left, sorry, right rear corner, would be the southwest corner of the property. The house itself is extremely tight to the left property line as well. It's like six feet away from the property line. So we couldn't, you can't get a driveway on the left side of the house. Then the driveway, as you could see by the survey that we handed out in our site plan, it enters off of Heights Road on the right side of the house, and then it traverses off, once it gets behind the house, it angles to the left and down to the garage. So what this causes, it has a couple of negative impact to how Tapia's and anyone who lived in the home would use the driveway where they put cars, how they house cars, how they access the backyard and have, you know, the living space out the rear of the home. So some comments regarding existing condition. The existing driveway is over 200 feet long. It's 3,541 square feet of asphalt. You can see how big it gets behind the house. It really bellies out. And one photograph that we showed the rear of the house, you could see like a BMW parked literally right up against the house. It's almost 100% asphalt across the back. As I mentioned, it cuts across the yard, so it doesn't allow what we see as typical, you know, patio steps, grass, access for the occupants of the house to get inside and outside. And what you're looking at is cars when you look out the back of the house. And Mrs. Tapia will speak to the next point. When people are in the backyard and a young adult comes flying around the corner with a car, there have been instances where the collision of the car, possible collision of the car and the and the occupant of the home gets a little close and tense. So just the circulation paths are not working. And then just by the virtue of where the garage is, it's so far away, and it's at the wrong side of the house as far as entry points. They don't really use it to park cars because it's too far away. So before I talk about the proposed improvements, Mrs. Tapia wanted to talk a little bit more about living in the house and how what she sees as problems with the site, and then I'll go through the proposed improvements.
So, you know, as Roger said, as you're, you know, trying to use that space, and they sometimes use it almost as patio space because there's not really a place for patio. It's just all driveway. And when you do come around that corner, it's sort of a blind spot, and you can see where there is that bay window. That's the kitchen, and that's the entrance coming down from the kitchen. Again, sort of a blind spot, either when you're, if you're in the yard and someone's coming into the yard, or if you're even coming down the steps and someone's driving out of the yard. So it's just a really kind of precarious location, I guess, for the driveway. You know, Roger and I have talked often about the garage is on the wrong side. You know, it's just in, because it was built so long ago, no one ever really probably considered that you would have, you know, multiple cars and, you know, moving often in and out of that space, so. And then again, as Roger said, the garage itself, you know, we use it rarely, you know, maybe occasionally in the winter if there's a big storm. But, you know, most times we're not using it during the, during the, you know, 11 months ahead of the year.
So our proposed improvements would be the following. First is to construct a two-car detached garage, as shown on drawing V1. It's in the rear yard of the property. It's just slightly behind the existing house. It would be a two-car garage detached. Relocate the driveway out of the port cochere. The problem with the port cochere, it's very tight, and when one person parks there, because they don't go all the way back to the garage, it doesn't allow other cars to come and go. So everybody gets stacked up in the front, in the front yard, which we'd rather have the cars, you know, have access. So we want to relocate the driveway to the right, to the north, with a more of a traditional driveway that comes off of Heights Road, would be 12 foot wide as a curb cut, and then pretty much straight on to the detached garage. This would reduce the square footage of asphalt by 48.5%. So we're going from 3,541 to 1823. So then we would remove all the asphalt at the back of the house, as drawing V1 shows, and develop like a grass area, be a sloped grass area, a modest patio. A modest patio behind the garage, behind the house, just for barbecuing and a picnic table. And then repurpose the existing port cochere. We were proposing just to extend the covered porch. So we would leave the columns and the roof, and we would just build additional porch floor. No increase of footprint, just literally within the roofed area. Then lastly, we would like to leave the garage or the barn on the back for a couple of reasons. Functionally, the garage is really for two cars. Tapia's really want to put the cars in the garage. So all the bicycles and all the other stuff, garbage cans, whatever, your long storage stuff would go in the back garage, as well as the pool equipment, versus having it outside. And then also, there's a door that faces the pool. So they would use that just to come in in inclement weather and have like a ping pong table, whatnot, in the barn. So we don't want to tear down the existing, the garage. So based on these improvements and reconfiguration of the site, we need three variances. I'll go through each one. The lot coverage variance is within the first 140 feet, and that's at 22.3% versus 20. The proposed detached garage on its own is compliant in regards to size, height, gross building area and location. It's actually 10 feet off the north property line versus five. So we have an enhanced setback on the right-hand side. So the structure in itself is compliant. What's triggering this variance is the size of the porch, which is over 600 square feet, while the variance is about, equates to about 317 square feet. So the porch itself is big, and then the house itself is big. We're not planning on adding to the footprint. We're just trying to repurpose that port cochere. So the variance is for 22.3. Over the whole lot, there's no variance required. Total lot coverage over the whole lot is 18.5. So we're compliant over the whole lot. Just some things that we've talked about and discussed. If we were to move the garage past the 140-foot line, you could see how far back it goes into the property. You'd have to move it 20, almost 50 feet or 45 feet. It would defeat the purpose of the whole idea of recapturing the backyard and the grass and the natural landscaping. It would also increase the length of the driveway, which is our last variance. It would increase that variance pretty dramatically. We're only over by a percent. But we would have to extend the driveway back another 45 feet. And our belief is that this creates a better use of the property. It retains the existing structure in the back, which is in the Historic Heights District. And based on the lot coverage being compliant over the whole lot, you know, we feel there's no negative impact of leaving these two structures on the site, even though the first 140 feet requires variance. There's so much distance between the two garages. It's over 70 feet. And we do have the, we have 17 and a half feet between the house and the proposed garage. So there's enough open space, light and air, that even though the number is at 22%, 22.3, this lot, I think, can handle the additional lot coverage. So that's the first variance. The second variance is the gross building area of accessory structures, both the existing and the proposed garages over the total lot. Again, this, if you think of it as the proposed garage is compliant as far as square footage and size and gross building area, the existing barn is compliant on its own. It's this dilemma of wanting to build a functional garage, get rid of this long driveway that cuts across the property, but we don't want to tear down the historic structure. So we're left with this, we feel is a very appealing structure in the back of the yard, but not functional. So the again, as Tapia said, that the existing garage is just in the wrong spot. It just happens to be in the wrong spot. If it was on the right-hand side, we would use it. It's just, it just traverses across the property. They really cause a lot of negative impact. And then the last variance is the the last variance is the improved lot coverage and that's within a hundred and forty feet of the lot. The existing improved lot coverage is at forty-one point six percent. And we're actually going to reduce it with the proposed plan that we're showing to forty-one percent, although it's still a one percent over, forty percent is allowed. So it's a reduction of a pre-existing condition, but it's still a variance, less, less of a variance. Based on the reduction of the pre-existing condition as well as the improved lot coverage over the whole lot is compliant. You know, I feel this has, you know, minimal to 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 no negative impact. So those are the three variances. If you guys have any questions on you know, the proposed modifications and improvements, I'd be glad to answer any of them.
Alright, so we'll, we'll open it up for questions, I guess. And I'll just start with, I know that you kind of talked about it a little bit, but I agree that that, the existing garage is not in the ideal location. I think that moving I think moving it makes perfect sense, right? Saying we don't, it's in a spot where we can't even park cars and it's creating, you know, asphalt city. We're going to move it closer to the home. And we're going to reduce, significantly reduce the amount of asphalt. All of that makes sense. What doesn't just make sense, and maybe you could just talk about it a little bit more. Is, you know, usually when people move garages, they knock one down and build a new one where it should be, where it makes sense, where it's either bigger or in a better spot. Or it's because maybe the existing structure doesn't meet their needs or number of different reasons, but they moved the garage. We're not doing that here. The proposal is to build a second two-car garage. That's where I'm struggling a little bit, because if you just came here and said, the garage is in the wrong spot, we're going to put a pool, we're going to rip up all this asphalt. And we're going to put the garage in the right spot. I mean, I have no issue with that. It's just keeping that other garage up. I just, maybe you could speak to a little bit more again.
Yeah, I think, you know, for me, one of the, I think, more important parts that I had said to Roger from the beginning is it was built in eighteen eighty-five and I think I just really struggle with knock it down. You know, it's, it's been here for that long, it's in amazing condition, the doors are still operational, has all the hardware. You know, the house also built eighteen eighty-five, you can probably see the wainscoting behind me in the tiny room. It's, you know, it's just a beauty and I think that's really a driving factor for me.
Is there any way to move it?
Oh, oh my gosh, I don't know. I've never even thought about it. It's
I mean, people move garages and barns in Bridget all the time. I just wonder if there's any way to move this garage to where you need it to be, so that you can use it as a garage.
Well, I think if we moved it forward, then we would be non-conforming there too, because it's I think it's bigger than the structure we're proposing, right, Roger? It's probably a good
Well, I mean, and that may be true, but if we're thinking about what if we're going to grant a variance, what makes the most sense? At least for me, I'm not going to speak for the board members, we'll, we'll go around to each of them to get their questions. But that to me makes more sense, right? Because then we're approving a variance. But you're you're ending up with only one two-car garage.
Right. Yeah, I think I just don't see the other structure as a garage. I see it as, you know, an old carriage house that we would be using for, you know, patio storage and and basically that's it. So I, you know, it's not really a functional garage anymore, it's really more of a again, carriage house, and I think Roger keeps calling it cabana, but
If, I mean, I'm looking at the pictures, it looks like a garage and you could I mean, you you could, if you, when you move it, you could modify it such that it works like a garage. And I think most people, if they, if this was approved as presented, you know, would look at the yard and look at two, they would see two garages. I mean, I understand you're calling one a carriage house and one a garage, but there's not much of a difference, at least from my book.
Well, in regard to lot coverage, both garages over the total lot are compliant for lot coverage. So we're not eliminating a variance by tearing down the garage for lot coverage. It's still you know, so that's not causing, saving both does not cause a variance in regards to lot coverage. In regards to improved lot coverage, tearing down the garage doesn't eliminate that variance either.
Yeah, it's not that, it's about, well, you need a variance, right? So you need a variance to keep that garage up.
It's the third variance, which is the worst building area.
Of accessory structure.
Yeah, and it's, it's purely a love of a historical structure that was built in the wrong place. I mean, that's
And Gary, and Roger, you can't move that?
It's, it's basically walls, I think it's slate roof, isn't it?
Yeah, we we fixed the roof, we ripped it down.
You know, I mean, I've moved smaller wood barn type structures, but this is a pretty big
Yeah, and it's, it is stuck in the inside, I think, is probably cracked pieces, yeah.
I think what we would do is just tear it down and just build a new garage up front. I mean, then we'd lose the structure. And we don't, you know, we don't want to do that. It's just, that would be probably the path that we would take if you know, we're in this dilemma where we have a structure that doesn't work, but it's it's rather pretty and architecturally interesting with all the diamond glass and the little dormers. We tried to mimic the new garage, architectural design based on the old garage. If it was on the right hand side of the property, we wouldn't be here. It's just, I think the property got subdivided in the left part, the left where there's a newer house, I think it took what was probably the access to the garage at one point.
Alright, so I'm going to reserve any additional questions and we're going to move to other board members. Greg, any questions? Greg Brown?
Hey, everybody. No questions. I, I, I have the same concern that you know, Sergio is speaking of when it comes to the accessory building structures. And the sort of two garages, I mean, when we look at it, I understand it's an accessory building, but you're also asking for fifty percent. You know, more than you can actually put on the property right there. Which is a large
I think another, you know, just another consideration that had come up with when Roger and I were talking, because a number of our neighbors have the original structures also in the back. I think Fifty Heights Road and my neighbor next door to me, they have theirs. The difference with their properties are, they had the opportunity to put their garage, their two-car garage underneath the house because the slope of the property. But because we're in front of Ridge Road, our property is very flat and we don't have that you know, that opportunity. So just again, you know, just another point that we know that the others have kept those historic structures back there, but their properties were just a little bit different in in the way they were. You know, again, that's slow.
The other thing that we discussed is if, if need be, we could reduce the size of the proposed detached garage. That helps with some of the board's concerns about size. It itself, it's a compliant building. It's got enhanced setbacks. It's smaller than, I, I, when you think of it as a single piece, and there's a lot of distance between these two garages. If they were right next to right next to each other, I could see more concern, but they're seven feet apart.
You can't reduce it by five hundred square feet to make it
We have two garage doors, which I think looks better, the scale of it. We could reduce it and do a single door, a wide door that's designed to look like two doors. And take some off the width and take a little bit off the depth.
But I guess the, the, the question still remains, could you, is there any possibility, because you do like the look of that the existing garage, moving that to where the garage, proposed garage is and then allowing you to, you know, can you then build something back there? Well, you actually can't really. You could still be back here. The question is, what size would it be?
I didn't follow you, Greg.
Yeah, I'm talking, I, I was saying back to the discussion before about could you move the existing garage because you like it, you know, the look of it? Could you move that to where the proposed garage is and then look at building some smaller structure, cabana type in the back?
So the proposed garage is twenty-five feet wide, the existing garage is thirty-five feet wide.
So you'd fall into the, so you'd have to move it over.
So we, we would be five feet off the right property, left, the north property line. And we'd be twelve point five feet away from the house. We had to grow five feet to the left and the right. So it'd be a pretty big structure where we're proposing to put the new garage.
Well, maybe it's not there, right? I think you said earlier, if you, if this structure was on the other side of the property, right? You wouldn't be here, because you wouldn't need to, be fine. So I think the question is, well, then why don't you put this structure, which nobody wants to tear down something from eighteen eighty-five, but I've seen all over Ridge of people moving move houses. So why don't we just move this structure to where it should have been in the first place?
Well, I think there's a, you know, there's there's some virtue of saving it. And two, you know, there is recycling use that, you know, seems appropriate.
Well, and then the driveway is still a hundred and twenty-five feet. I don't know what that does with coverage, Roger, but you know, it's, it's a significant different distance, excuse me, between the garage and the house. I think the you know, the proposed garage is you know, you're taking a lot of that blacktop away and turning the yard into a yard. And, you know, that it's just more of a, I guess, you know, current state garage configuration with the, with the, where we proposed it. You know, and again, like, remember, we were talking earlier about the asphalt in the back, it's just massive, so you know, it's, it's still a hundred and twenty-five feet of driveway.
Right. Gary, any questions? Gary Negress?
Yeah. You tell me that's a two-car garage, Raj, but it's nine hundred and twenty-five feet. Now you're building a brand new two-car garage with four hundred and twenty-five feet. So
Five seventy-five.
I, I don't know what you're going to park back there, maybe it's three earth movers. So the other thing is just looking at all that window. What kind of second level is in there? There's got to be a storage level. Somebody didn't put all the windows on the side and the front, just for fun. And the last thing is, you're talking about converting it into bicycle storage and cabana type structure, which I think is a great idea. But why don't you take that structure? Don't move it. Salvage the doors and some of the windows. It's called recycling, it's green, it's a hundred and thirty years old. And those parts appear to work. And then put a cabana back there. And at that point, you put up a four-hundred-foot cabana and a four-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot garage and you don't have a variance for accessory structures. And it becomes a win-one for everybody. It's a five-hundred-foot cabana plus the patio, plus the pool. You've got a very nice area back there. Alright, and I think you could get a couple of bikes in. And cool, in addition to a pool pump and a filter. So I, I really, I, I don't see a thousand feet or nine hundred and twenty-five feet sitting back there. Because while it may be old, I got a funny feeling it's been refurbished in the last hundred-plus years. Maybe not in my memory or yours, but I'm only seventy-five, so I wouldn't know.
Angela, is there a second floor?
Sorry, go ahead. What was that?
Is there a second floor?
There is, there is a second floor. It's, you know, it's not finished and nail holes can come through the, the roof and you know, you walk up, you would hit your head walking up. I don't hit my head, you hit your head. Just in terms of the, what you just said, that it's been refurbished or renovated. It's actually not. It's really in original condition. It says the, you know, still the push button, like little switches on it and it is all stucco inside and then again upstairs is just an old wood floor and, and, you know, like a barn, looks like a barn.
Alright, so before we get to Dan's questions, I'll just jump in because I do, first of all, I think Gary's idea is great, the green recycling, so that you actually end up with a structure that is new and old at the same time. And I'm not trying to impugn your character. I know you are probably going to leave it as a cabana and that's it. But what we do runs with the land, so whatever, you know, we agree and decide and grant if we did. Will be for the next buyer and the next buyer and the next buyer. And, you know, very large accessory structures that don't need to be used for a shed or a garage because there's a second, very large accessory structure, are very tempting to turn without permits into a living quarters. And we don't have the type of enforcement in this town where we are peeking inside everybody's house. You get a contractor in there and with a very, very short period of time, you'll be nine hundred and twenty-five square foot apartment. And so that's another concern that I have. And I'm not suggesting that's what you want to do. But if tomorrow you sold the house, somebody would be tempted to do it because they would say, I have a garage already, here's that two, brand new two-car garage next to my house, so I don't, I can put my cars or my tools in there. And I have a nine hundred and twenty-five square foot accessory structure. What can I do with it? Let me get creative. And either they turn it into a full-fledged, you know, accessory, like, living quarters for their family, or I've seen personally in this town. People turn it into, you know, rec rooms with bathrooms and bars and all sorts of amazing things with no permits. And it's something that we would never approve here. If you came and said, we want to turn it into that, we would say, well, no. But it just becomes too tempting to do so.
Even if we allowed a deed restriction, that it could not be converted?
Right, so people who do things without permits and without telling the building department, don't really care about deed restriction personally. That's, that's my view. But that's just an opinion, not a question. So why don't I open it up to Dan Pearlman? If he has any questions, and then we'll move on to Jonathan.
Questions, you know, listen, I, I think that, you know, all valid points raised. Frankly, you know, questions would be, you know, to Roger, did he think of this or that? And I'm sure, I was saying, we've seen Roger testify many times. I'm sure he can represent his client's interests as both the applicant wants and as, as he's certainly capable. It's a beautiful structure, the home, the home was beautiful, it's, it's been that way. I certainly recognize the desire to move the, you know, to me, it seems like the desire is to move the driveway. Whether or not I think the design of where the new driver would be built is, you know, desirable or not to us, that's somewhat irrelevant. But I think Greg's point frankly, that it's fifty percent over on accessory building. I think that's an enormous consideration, you know, to be made. And if the desire is to move the driveway, to have a better use of the backyard, you know, that potentially can be done. But I think the accessory use overage just is, is, is too much to to consider it's going for.
Thank you, Dan. Jonathan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items that jumped off the page for me are the same questions and concerns as my colleagues. But to a slightly different degree. The first question I would have asked was if you were going to keep that garage and this, after you said that such an old home, I think anything that is in good structural condition, that would be the first order of agenda, just to keep it, because it's a historic item or an original item. And so that's a very, a, a, a very good idea and I like that thought. But then when I saw Roger's new garage here, I thought, well, it's a lot of extra accessory, just as Mr. Pearlman mentioned. So how can you combine those two and get what you want? Roger, did you take enough of a look at that garage? And from what I saw on the outside, can it be easily moved? Is it not a large enough slab or is it just because of the way it was made, not going to be able to be moved easily without building a structure in it or around it to keep it in position while it's moved? So is there any thought to, to whether it can be reasonably moved anywhere else on the property, to the right of the property, closer to the home, but where it can be continued? to be used as a garage? And then put your pool and your patio for your pool and some, some different-sized cabana, as Gary said. No, make that anywhere you want, but use the garage for a garage and just put it somewhere. Uh, now, did you take some time to see that? Or it needs to be determined whether it can be safely moved without causing it to deteriorate and have to be redundant on the inside at some greater expense to keep it?
Oh, you would not, you would just abandon the slab and the foundation. You would build a new slab with a foundation uh, where you're gonna move it, and then it would just pick up the structure from the slab up and move it. I didn't look at the structural uh, skeleton of it, of how hard or easy that's gonna be. I just know that with the plaster and some of the other materials, um, it's definitely gonna have residual damage. Um, you know, you know me. I don't tear down a lot of houses in Ridgewood. I mean, my first gut thought is save it, come up with a creative way to solve all the problems. It's there. I, you know, it would just, it would kill me to, to knock that thing down just because it's in the wrong spot, you know?
I don't think there's one person here who said knock it down, right? So it's either move it as is, which we know it can be done, right? Because we've all seen it. We've seen much bigger structures moved in Ridgewood. Or, and I thought Gary's idea was brilliant, which is build your, build your four hundred and twenty-five square foot new, brand-new garage with a perfect structure and slab and everything, and then use the materials from the old garage for the exterior so that it looks like a hundred, and quite frankly, half of it will be a hundred and thirty years old. So you're not really knocking anything down. You're either moving or repurposing.
Yeah, I don't think there's a way to leave that garage there and have it be the only garage in the property. And I'm not, I'm not smart enough or creative enough to figure out how to get there, but with a car without killing the backyard. It's just geometrically, it's just
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, Roger. In fact, the initial game plan here is, is very practical. And I fully understand Mr. Tapia's idea to have a backyard, grass and not tarmac. So that's fully understood, and I'm not suggesting that. It's just the, the two garages, two buildings that are garages and the five hundred square feet, that's a lot to ask for. And I'm asking if there's a way you can use that garage as a garage, but just move it somewhere and continue to use it as a garage, and then make your pool and patio wherever you want. On the garage, the new garage though, and this is the second part to my questions, uh, some dimensions are missing and, and I see a small error. Maybe it's just a printing or typo. On V1, for the height of the garage, you're saying fifteen feet. But on V2, you're listing it as eighteen.
Yeah. So once, this was a revision. Um, we had previously submitted to Jane a garage that overlapped the house. And then speaking with Paula and Jane, uh, once it overlapped the house, it had to meet principal structure setbacks and so forth. Once we moved it back, I had the enhanced side yard setback and I had the ability to go to eighteen feet. Uh, so eighteen feet is the proposed height. It's, it's incorrect on the zoning schedule. It's correct on the elevation. But that doesn't need a variance. That's the, uh, that's allowed within the ordinance.
Okay. My next question is, can we accept that as such, Bruce, just a typo on the zoning chart?
It can be corrected.
Yeah, we can correct that.
Okay.
You said your zoning chart is wrong at the maximum height of eighteen feet, Roger's permitted?
Yes.
And you're proposing eighteen?
Yeah, the elevations on V2 show eighteen feet. I don't know if you guys got the, the June version, but that used to be fifteen feet high.
Continuing on my question of dimensions, do we need, uh, uh, on your uh, V1 here, uh, that site plan, there's no dimensions for the pool. There's square footage, but do we need actual length-width dimensions on all of that? And if that garage is going to stay there in some form, do we need the, its original dimensions and what's inside? Is there living space upstairs? Do we need more details uh, of dimensions and function for the garage and the pool and the patio?
Well, the garage
For you, Roger, and Bruce?
The existing garage was taken off the survey and, you know, before our discussion began, we were not doing anything to it, so we didn't measure it. The pool and the patio actually has an active permit. That's a, that's a legal pool. It's been approved by Paula. It's got legal setbacks over the whole lot. The improved lot coverage is not an issue. So that pool is presently being installed. That's, that doesn't really impact what we're discussing tonight in regards to the numbers. Uh, so there's a whole permit package in town uh, for that pool installation that's been approved by, uh, Paula and, and the billing department.
Now, I know of these. That includes the patio with the pool, the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. So that's just in place. It's not mentioned here. Okay. Well, then we get back to what myself and the other board members are saying. It's a lovely garage. Is there some way to keep using it as a garage and not have two garages? And, and just build a smaller cabana like Gary mentioned, you know, keep that garage, absolutely, but put it somewhere. And that gives us the best numbers and the function of a garage and your pool and patio and cabana as well.
So one scenario is if we move, and I'm not saying, I gotta speak to the Tapias, but if we're to move that garage forward, we would have to, I think, push it back a little bit more from the house. So your, your lot coverage over a hundred and forty feet is gonna go up. It's not gonna be twenty-two point three. It's gonna be
So Roger, I think, I actually think in this case, I know we're always on numbers, right? We're always really concerned about the percentages and the numbers. I think I'm less concerned about the actual percentage, you know, getting it down a point or two more, which we often are. To me, this is more a we're gonna have two very large accessory structures on the piece of property. It just doesn't, that doesn't make sense, right? It doesn't matter what the numbers are. It doesn't make sense. And there is an alternative. I mean, I thought Gary was brilliant. You could, that structure of nine hundred and twenty-five square feet is big enough. You could use all of those exterior materials to build your new garage and the new cabana, which you would need a variance for, but we'd be much more amenable to than keeping that with a nine hundred and twenty-five-foot cabana.
Accessory structures though. Because you have a five-hundred-foot cabana and a five-hundred-foot brand-new garage, if you will, all right? That'd be a thousand feet. That meets the number.
So we don't need a variance.
Right. So that works for everyone. Eliminate a variance. And, uh, you'd have two things that you need. You need a cabana if you're gonna have a pool back there. I understand that. Uh, particularly at that distance from the house. So you're, you're probably gonna run plumbing and a bathroom and a shower and everything else out there. So by the time you go get through digging that place up, that garage is, I'm sorry. It, it just really, from a contractor's point of view, it doesn't make sense. So salvage the part of it that's valuable, the windows, things like that, which, which are, are carrying forward a, a vision from a hundred and thirty years ago. And the rest of it is a frame.
So your, your, your goal or your thought is to get rid of the gross building area for the accessory structures?
It does that. It will also just make sense from the board's point of view that we want you to be able to use your property. We appreciate the fact you're getting rid of all that asphalt because that's good for us and it's good for the town because we get water going in the ground instead of running off of it. So we're just trying to find something where it's a win-win.
Good.
Tapia, what do you think about all of this?
Me?
Yes. Where are your mind, where is your mind going now with all of this? So your input is valuable and and I'd like to hear it as well as the other members. So what do you think?
Um, let's see. Well, I, you know, again, I think I'm, I'm uh, a little stuck on leave it where it is. Um, it was built there. Someone constructed there. I mean, I get what you're saying about recycle the parts, but it's not the same. I think if you're in the structure, you really get the sense of what, what it was. Um, and, you know, again, I look down my street and I can see other same structures that are in their backyards that, um, that, that were knocked down. So I think I'm just a little stuck on knocking it down, um, and recycling parts. So I get what you're saying. But, you know, the property is fairly large. And there's, I think, quite a distance between the house and the existing barn. Um, and it just, you know, creates this sort of beautiful grassy area and, um, you know, there's, then there's even privacy, privacy in between the houses. So, you know, I, I think, again, I'm just really stuck on not necessarily knocking it down or repurposing and so on. And I get what you're saying about, you know, who's gonna live there and, and so on. But, uh, you know, I don't know. You, you know, and you control what people are doing where, um, they're renting other houses, you know, you, you know, that's, it's really trying to control everything and I don't know that. Um, I mean, I, again, I get that, but, um, that's not the purpose here. The purpose here would be to reduce the asphalt, build a functional garage and still keep that structure because it was built so long ago. I mean, I have paperwork from the house that was, um, from the original owners. We have pictures of the house from the historic book that's sitting in the library. Um, the, you know, so anyway, I, I think that you have, you know, said your piece about what the rules are with the town and what the, what the structures have to be. Um, I think, again, I'm just really stuck on, you know,
You are, you are stuck in a catch-22, which is very, very common in a town like Ridgewood, which is you have something old and beautiful that you want to preserve, but you also want to do something new and more functional. And that happens all the time in this town, not just with accessory structures, but with every possible thing you can imagine. Um, and ultimately, it's gonna be up to you to decide what makes sense, right? We're not telling you, you have to do this. What we're saying is if you're coming here for a variance, this is, I mean, it just seems unanimous at this point. That's what our concern is. So if you don't want to do anything to that structure, you can leave it. But then, you know, the variance is probably not gonna work.
It's like even the porch, you know, Roger and I talked about the porch. So the, you know, the porch is massive. It's six hundred square feet. So that also puts the number over. So, you know, we talked about, okay, well, do you knock down the porch? And again, I feel like, oh, no, you don't knock down the porch. That's ridiculous. That, you know, you just don't take houses apart that are still intact with the original windows just because you're, you know, and whatever your percentages are, I don't know what the fifty percent honestly really refers to, but, um, you know, it's, it's just taking the whole thing apart. You know, even, you know, the, the way it's positioned on the property and how close it is to the neighbor's driveway. Um, so I think we're just, you know, applying rules now to something that, again, didn't exist then. And, and then I have to figure out, you know, I guess what's gonna be the priority.
Yeah. I mean, you have to understand, you're here before us asking for something. We, we didn't knock on your door and say, please knock your accessory structure.
No, no, no. And before, right.
I wish, I wish you would leave it perfect, you know, exactly the way. I wish nobody would ever do anything that, that something is beautiful. But you want a pool, you want, you want to park your cars closer to your house. I mean, these are your choices, right? These aren't our choices. What we have to do is we have as a board worry about things like what happens in the future. What, right? And so that's our charge. Um, let me do this. I want to open it, hold on one second. I want to open it up. Dylan, is there anyone else on the line? I just want to make sure the members of the public have gotten a chance to ask questions.
Uh, we have no other attendees.
All right. No, so no, no questions or comments from, from the public.
No.
Yeah. I mean, our neighbors, I think, were supportive of, you know, they, they were agreeable.
They're not here, so that would be hearsay. We're not allowed to, to, to hear that. Um, are there any questions by any other board members that could help um, the applicant and, and Mr. Schlick decide on whether to move forward tonight for a vote or go back to the drawing board? Any additional questions or clarity that you can provide?
I, I would like to say one more thing, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, so Mr. Tapia, the lesser of the difficult decisions for you, and, and I, I, I have my compassion in, in dealing with this. Uh, the lesser of the more difficult decisions would be to move it. Keep it intact, but move it and use it as it is. And moving it from its original position, I fully understand. That's where it was put a hundred and thirty years ago, like the house and, and the nice front porch you have. But it doesn't let you do what you want. So moving it intact and using it is just a less of a difficult decision, but it leaves you with the, the original building. And if that means, uh, it's gonna change the percentages inside the, uh, first hundred and forty feet, well, it's to the benefit. So the positive criteria and negative criteria that we use come up. And if the overall plan is going more towards positive, then even if it does increase the numbers, as our chairman said, it's a more palatable condition for all of us to agree to, to make the property more usable in the 21st century than back in the 20th century. So that's all. Keep, keep that in mind and get out your crystal ball.
Anyone else on the board?
Bruce, can I, uh, can I ask you a question, Bruce?
Roger. Fine.
Um, doesn't the historic, uh, district allow for like a flexible C variance in, in regards to, you know, the master plan, which includes a historic preservation commission, which has designated this building and this, and this neighborhood? Doesn't that allow the board to have a little bit more flexibility with the numbers versus the spirit of saving old homes? I mean,
Well, the
Go ahead.
The board can take into account uh, the historic nature. It's one of the purposes in the municipal land use law preserving. But at the same time, um, that doesn't prompt the necessity to have an additional two-car garage. That's what the board has to weigh. Does it necessitate the overage on the coverage that you're talking about as far as the size of the combined accessory buildings?
Yeah, but the, I think with a flexible C variance, it also states that, you know, it's based on specific, unique conditions to this specific application, okay? In that, how the garage is placed in the back corner and how the driveway comes in the upper right corner. I think everybody understands the logic of what we're confronted here with. And it just happens to be, you know, in a historic district. So I know the numbers. I, I just, you know, I try to balance the historic preservation with the numbers. That's what I'm trying to point out. So I'm trying to find a balance of that where, you know, like you said, it's a win-win, John, you know, we want, or Gary, we want to respect what was built a hundred and something years ago, but also, um, you know, we do need variances for it to function correctly. So we're, we're, you know, the, does the board take into consideration that part of the, the, the master plan?
Yeah.
The board is recognizing the historic nature of the building. It's no question about it. Uh, you know, it's, it's unique. Uh, but at the same time, the board's got a way from a planning perspective, is the amount of the accessory building now proposed uh, too excessive for the lot itself? That's one of the, that's, that's a policy decision the board has to make.
Yeah. So I was pointing out how far away these structures are. They're not, they're seventy feet apart. So if the concern is the bulk of the two, well, it's quite a, quite a
The, the ordinance doesn't have, you can exceed the thousand square feet if the accessory structure is a certain distance from the prime principal resident, uh, building or, uh, the distance between accessory structures. It, there's no, there's no scale. It's just a, a flat number.
Yeah, but I think the spirit of controlling the volume of structures is to preserve open space, light and air. And what I'm trying to say is the fifteen hundred square feet does not create an alleyway or huge shadows or feel like it's, you know, so close that it looks as if it's fifteen hundred. This doesn't, this isn't gonna look like, to the layperson, they're not gonna see fifteen hundred square feet of you're gonna see a five hundred square foot structure and a nine hundred square foot structure to the layperson. It's not, I know it's fifteen hundred on the chart, but visually, it's not fifteen hundred. Um, I don't know, I just
Well, that's a policy decision by the board. That's not, that's not something you go find in municipal land use law. That's, that's something they have to, they have to determine based upon the existing conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Roger, I have one last statistical question. I don't see a number for, and that's the, the extension of the porch there where the portico is. I found a width of eleven feet or up to twelve with the columns, but I don't see on V2, how long, how deep does it go down?
Sorry, what part of the house are you talking about?
This is the new porch, the, the, the extension of the front This is the new porch, the, the, the extension of the front porch around the side of the, right side of the house. I, I was looking for a length, a depth measurement. I found the width on V2, but I haven't found a length measurement.
It's the existing portico share, is it not, Roger?
If you look at the pictures, the columns and the roof are there. It's, it's not, we're not building the roof. We're not building the columns. We're not changing the footprint of the house or the porch. We're simply just extending two-by-tens across and extending the decking.
Okay.
Creating a floor in an existing structure, right, Roger?
Correct. It exists there.
Understood. That's where the dimension comes from. It just wasn't listed there, right underneath the side picture. This, the steps elevation, side porch elevation. That's all. Thank you.
All right, Roger, so you've, I think, heard everyone's concerns. I think we've got a lot of creative solutions for you to consider. You can, as you know, make a closing statement, and we could deliberate and vote. But you could also, you have the right to table this application, go back and speak with your client and come back with something that addresses our concerns, and we could give you a different date. It's your, your choice.
Yes, we'd like to table it. And, you know, there's a lot of good points being made. There's a lot of moving parts. Unfortunately, there's no simple, common answer, so, yeah, this needs some time and some, some discussion with the Tapias. And then we'd like to table it to the next, you know, first available hearing.
Okay, Jane?
August eleventh?
Oh, no, I can't do August eleventh, sorry.
August twenty-five?
You might not be here either. September, sorry, guys.
Um, September eighth?
Does that work?
It works for me.
Ms. Tapia, September eighth, does that work?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, excellent. So this matter is being carried to September eighth, seven thirty PM via Zoom. We're still going to be on Zoom for a while longer, so no further notice required. We will see you via Zoom on September eighth.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, take care.
Good evening.
Okay, so now we'll move back to the agenda. We skipped over the approval of the June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, and June thirty, twenty twenty minutes. So could we have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Um, so for the June twenty-nine, the only ones here that can vote on that are Greg and Gary.
That's all you need. You only need one vote, so it was fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All right, Greg?
Yes.
Greg Brown? Yes. Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll skip back to the end of the agenda and memorialize the resolutions.
Um, we still have the June thirty minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I, yeah, it's two different ones. It was the June thirty.
Um, everyone here except John was at that meeting, so.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Second.
All right, Gary.
Okay. Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Daniel Perlman?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Resolutions?
Now resolutions.
Okay, so we have the Kurtain, the Kurtain residence, twenty South Pleasant Ave. Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Gary Negrits? Daniel Perlman?
Yes.
The Phillips residence, three sixty-seven Marshall Street. Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Daniel Perlman?
Yes.
The Hills residence, three seventeen Down Street. Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Daniel Perlman?
Yes.
And the Warden residence, three twenty Fairway Road. Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
John Pepietro?
Yes.
That's it.
All right, we're all, we're all done, right? That's it. Anything else anyone want to discuss, or if not, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All right.
Hi.
I was, it feels like long, it's only nine fifteen, but it felt longer than that. All right, everyone. Take care.
Great. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Sergio. Jane, good night.
All right, good night.
Thanks, Dylan.
Good night.
Take care, Dylan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.